Regular meeting in Windsor Heights, City Council, come to order. Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Move to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is public hearing on ordinance 2021-06, amending the code of ordinances for City Windsor Heights, amending city code 3.02 related to voting precincts. Move to open the public hearing.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
I'll kill it.
Todd, we got it.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
And Mike Jones?
Yes.
Any public comment on what you've heard Travis or?
Uh, no, basically we had a bit of a struggle like other cities are about how to do these descriptions. They're supposed to be written so that the layman observer can can figure out just by reading the description what the, um, what the, where the precincts are at. And our issue was that prior, they wanted to match the school districts. And if you look at the map up there on the wall, that, so all those, we had to describe it by lot line all the way down toward the middle of the, of the city because if there was like a street running right through there, if, but it would have been really easy to write it. But there was really no landmarks or monuments or anything like that that we could go off of to make it that layman's description. So, um, I've seen some of Ankeny's and other places and I think this one fits. If it doesn't, we can always bring it back again. Um, but so far no comment from SLS, Secretary of State.
Any? Since we don't have any, move to close the public hearing.
Oh.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
And Mike Jones?
Yes.
Consideration of first reading of the ordinance 2106 related to voting precincts, motion?
Move.
Any discussion or?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
And Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is consider waiving second and third readings of same ordinance, move to adopt.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
And Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is public hearing on proposed precinct boundaries. Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Did you have a question, Mike?
Nope, I'm just broken up time.
No, man, you can't do that.
It's time to thaw.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Uh, Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
And Mike Jones?
Yes.
We had any comment relative to these?
We have not, and it's, um, basically just checking off the box of the worksheet again for the Secretary of State and the county, so.
Michael, do you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, so I'm, I'm just wondering, um, with the two precincts rather than three, will that change, um? So, we're currently in the West Des Moines School District where I live.
Yes.
Is that, will that entire, and I'm not sure which precinct it is, if it's now one or two?
That's one.
Okay, that's one. So one, will all of one be in West Des Moines?
Yep, all of one will be in the West Des Moines School District and all of two will be in the Des Moines School District.
Perfect, thank you.
That simplifies things.
That does, yeah.
Hmm, no further discussion, uh, move to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo? And Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is public forums, time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than what's on the agenda. We will not take any action. Come to podium, state your name, address, no more than five minutes. Any public comment? Edie? Do you have anything to say?
I have nothing to say.
Nothing to say?
Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Next item is consent item, consent agenda. Move to approve?
So move.
Second.
Can I pull?
Discussion?
Can I pull item A, item I, and item J for further discussion?
You can either pull them or ask questions at the bottom.
I can, sure. If that's, if I could ask now?
Bill?
That, that's easier for me.
So, A, um, just would like to have my statement on the council meeting minutes. When you go to the reports, just would like to make sure that it is adjusted, adjusted to what I said. Um, I'm not requesting the University Avenue punch list. Um, I'm actually wanting to discuss University Avenue and some of the construction issues that I've observed as well as heard about from residents. So, you can state, you know, I asked when we were going to have the discussion about University Avenue. That would basically be what I had asked. And it did talk about the punch list, but that was just because that was kind of how the email went, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna amend the minutes to say ask for a discussion on the University Avenue project?
That works.
Alright.
What was your second item?
Um, the second one is item I. And that would be, um, the?
Yeah, approve appointment of those was better.
Yes. And that's just, you know, I, I appreciate that she's, you know, volunteering to become a member of the community event, or the community events committee. But there has been no communication to anybody on the community events committee that this was happening. And not that we have to approve it or anything, but it would be nice, whoever is deciding this, to just let us know, hey, we're bringing on this person, you know, instead of reading it in a city council packet. Because other people on the committee, like maybe the chamber or the foundation, I'm sure they don't read through our packet regularly, so.
Who decided it?
I have no idea.
You got an application?
I think we're, we're deciding.
Well, I don't know what's considered, my, this is, uh?
The application originally did go to Mayor Burgess, and then I did also send it over to Mayor Jones, since he's gonna be, or Mayor Pro Tem Jones, excuse me, um, since he's gonna be making appointments later on in the agenda, so. That's how it appeared on the agenda.
So then someone applied and then through just applying, it ends up on our agenda to discuss, is that, she'll be?
That's what this one was, yes. We've had very few applications for very few other positions.
And like I said, I'm very happy that she's on the committee, there is not a question of that, I just?
Procedure.
Yes, you know, communication.
Okay.
Just worked.
So noted.
It's a good point.
Travis? Some noted.
I had some on.
And then J, oh, this is just kind of bringing it to the attention of council and residents that there is that rate for, the rate change for solid waste and recycling. The increase is like fifteen to twenty percent. Uh, Metro Waste has worked hard to keep the rates as low as possible. Um, they've taken over customer service as well as handling of the carts to try to reduce the rates. But I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about this rate increase with it just being here in the consent agenda. And that's it.
Okay. Any further discussion? We have a second Travis?
Yes, I would say.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
And Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is under new business, consideration of audiovisual upgrades to the council chambers. So involve adding, uh, the ability to have Zoom calls and so on in addition to having in-person.
Is there a presentation on this?
What you got in the packet?
Is there an individual that's gonna present regarding their?
Not at this point.
The recommendation?
We can tell you what our, our communication committee recommended.
Okay, there, there is a recommendation in here.
There is.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
So, that's?
Consider three, three bids and this was in between the two?
Yes, I know.
So?
Here, my question is, why did I pick that one?
So we picked that one, I think a lot of it came down to, um, the hard wire versus the Wi-Fi. The cheapest one was Wi-Fi and we were worried about the, the fact that this has never been a good Wi-Fi reception area for as long as I've been coming to council meetings. Um, and I, we wanted it to be reliable. And the, the first, that nine thousand dollar one, we wondered if it would be reliable. And that, that was, I think that was basically?
That was the big?
That was the big point for us.
Where does that company that did those bid, where is that located? I know we have the Wisconsin one and the, the one that you're recommending is in Des Moines.
So AVI is out of?
They're local.
Yeah, they're, yeah, and then? CTVI, that one is?
The nine?
It's a five-on-five number.
The nine thousand dollar one has implied. You know, the cheapest one is from Fly, I have video slash, but they're apparently. Wisconsin Audio and Video as well, they're on?
Eighty-six.
Northwest eighty-six, so.
The middle one too, you wanna do it, is that it?
Yes.
May I put it right maybe?
Yes.
Well, and, uh?
As is the, what's the principle? They're all local companies.
Yeah, well, I, I just wondering, is that the only reason you picked it because of the Wi-Fi situation?
Well, we looked at, at what was also included in it. Like as far as what, everything was basically the same, it's just different, different software, different versions, like it would be a Sony or a Vizio or, you know, so we were kind of comparing apples to oranges on that. And then, um, that was basically the, the one, the twenty-five thousand dollar one had a lot more bells and whistles. And for me, I didn't think that we needed it.
No, I, I agree with that. Well, I, I guess normally government money is what you look at for the no bids. And it all came to equal, now?
It wasn't equal.
And it wasn't equal, I think, like really the Wi-Fi because it's not reliable. That was one thing that we really held fast on was we wanted it to be hardwired in.
Okay, tell me about, and I, I read it, but I don't recall specifically. The warranty thing, or the, uh, you can buy the extended warranty and all that kind of thing.
What are the notes on that?
Because I think probably along the way, we'll need, the staff will need to deliver assistance.
They do, they, all of them come out, they all have like one day training. And Whitney made the comment that she would like to have like chief included, Travis included, probably Dennis, like, um, you know, all of these people included in this training and the mayor.
But some is providing ongoing because you can buy it.
Yes.
And so that's what I'm wondering.
So all of them provide the, the training upfront?
Right.
And then if you wanted to have more training, then you would have to pay for it. But I would think that we would be able to get by with just one day of training.
The warranties that they have too?
Both of the AVI and also CTI had, uh, complete service agreements for the first year and you can buy additional time.
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the one that's got, I think it is the second one that you're recommending, it's got a, a one-year, two-year?
Yeah.
Two-year.
Yep.
And so are you building that into the cost?
So we did not build that into the cost.
I think, I think it should be built in or whatever your?
Well, you got one year and?
Okay.
Well, are, are you gonna stick with one year or are you asking for money to do more than one year?
Just one year.
Just the one year is what we were doing.
Okay, so you're not gonna worry about it after one year? Because it may become worse, that's it.
Well, we can revisit it when?
Well, you can revisit, yes, but it may be more expensive when you're, when you're buying it afterwards.
Yeah, well, I, it's no different than buying a fridge, I mean, you know?
It is different than buying a fridge.
You hope, you hope it'll work considering the time that you have it.
Yeah.
A hope for the paralys?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well, I, you know, I think?
Why we're?
I think the, I'm just taking the role of, uh, questioner, but I don't know what anybody meant. That's the one I would pick.
Yeah, to, to, to simplify it, if the cheapest version had a hard wire connection, you would have chose that one. But that's really what it was.
Well, I, I, no, the one I, I liked the best was the second one, just the one you picked. And, and so I have no problem with that, but I am concerned about the warranty on the thing. And I think you gotta find out if you can buy extended warranty after the fact, if you want to do one year. So that would be a question I would ask.
And I'm sure Whitney could send it, an email.
So they don't come back a year later and you, you have a problem with it? And you say, well, we want to buy the extended warranty and it's too late?
Then we just replace it.
Yeah, but with your money?
It will be sooner or later. All right, we got the motion on the table?
I did not have a motion.
Okay. Move to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo? And Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of City Bot subscription agreement. Mike, do you wanna kind of talk about that for a moment if you need to?
Sure. Well, so City, how much, City Bot is our, our texting, um, subscription service where, you know, basically is a, a bot where you text questions or issues or, you know, things you're, things you want to know about with city services and it replies to your, and it sends you in the, in the right direction. And so we had a discussion at, um, our, uh, communications committee meeting about basically the usage of it, uh, the cost of it. And quite honestly, the value, we're, you know, sort of the return on investment we were getting on it. And now I think it's the kind of a question about whether or not we want to renew it. I have, um, I don't know, I don't believe the numbers were in here.
I didn't see them.
They weren't.
Okay.
Who's using it?
So we have a hundred and ninety-four, um, text communications. So that means like a hundred and ninety-four people have sent a text and either asked a question or, um, put in something about a vehicle on the street for too long, you know, any type of communication.
Okay, so it, oh, is it that thing that's on the card?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, yeah.
And then we have a hundred and twenty-one residents that have used this, um, service.
In a year.
In a year.
Yeah.
So that totals out to, um, so with, Whitney and I, we have a little different, uh, numbers. A hundred and ninety-four texting conversations come out to be twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents per communication. Or with a hundred and twenty-one residents using the service, it comes out to forty dollars and fifty cents per resident. And that is taking it at forty-nine hundred dollars, what we paid. That's Whitney's numbers. Now for me, what I did was I, I included the nine hundred dollars that we paid to set up because, that, we still paid for it. Um, so I put that in, so that equals out to be fifty-eight hundred dollars, which makes it forty-seven ninety-four per resident who uses the service and twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents per text communication. So I mean, we're still on the same path, we're over forty.
Should we vote on this?
Well, I, I think we, you know, it's, it's, a hundred and twenty-some people have used this service in a year.
No, I've used it three times.
Okay, so a hundred and twenty people plus Mike LaFredo? Have used this ser, it, it, the, it, I mean, just doing the math, it's, it's something that less than three percent of our residents use for, you know, a little over five thousand dollars. I think it's, it's only been a year. That's a long and I think short time to talk about a city service. But five thousand dollars is also pretty, it's not a large sum of money in the grand scheme of things, but it's five thousand dollars.
I agree.
So?
And it's actually going up, isn't it, a little bit more than that? It's going up to, I don't have that in me.
Chad, does it help you out at all having that card out there in your, in your job?
No, and actually the, I mean, we've, we've gotten a couple, like Susan mentioned, you know, a car parked on the side of the road. But there's also been a couple of conversations of coming through our, uh, department side that just, if I was the person on the other end, I would have been pretty upset because they, the system doesn't work, uh, like it should in my opinion.
I mean, you just called dispatch too, right?
So I guess for me, I sent a text asking about trash, like what day is trash pickup? Because I wanted to test the service because I, I hadn't used it before. And it came back and it gave me a link to go to the website. So then I clicked the link and it sends me to the website. And then I scrolled down what felt like for fifteen minutes and I was able to pick up the sticker from Metro Waste and then I clicked on that to find what it is. Now my thought was that I would get, it's on Friday except for holidays, but that isn't what happened. So for me, I wouldn't use the service to find an answer because I'm using my phone to send a text to get a link to then go to that website to then scroll, when I could just Google and find it without all those steps. So that's just personally.
So we really have a hundred and ninety-four text conversations, quality conversations or something else?
I, I asked for some information from Whitney to see what we were receiving. And I don't know if Whitney said that she was contacting City Bot, I don't know if the, we don't have a way to look at it on the computer, you know, through City Bot so that, like Whitney or Chad or Dalton can look and see what communications are going on. I thought it was, it was like a program, you just looked at it and it gave all the information, but I guess that's not how.
Correct, correctly, uh, or argue with me, if, that, this is kind of a duplication of how you can access information, uh, because we have police and fire and, and, you know, the dispatcher there. And I have a city to answer questions, we have council members to ask questions of. It, it seems like five thousand dollars is not needed.
Well, it's, it's just a way to make, you know, information more easily accessible, which is something you always want. Um, but again, you kind of have to question about the quality of the, you know, the, the information you're getting in return. So I think it's, you know, it's a tool to be experimented with to try to make things easier for people and maybe?
I think we do at the start when we decided on it that we were gonna try it and see if it worked. And if it didn't work, then we would move on to another tool. What tool? I have no idea, but that was?
Susan, it sounds like you're, you're not?
I'm not.
Yeah, I, that's what I'd be, would, 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 without going there. Tell you what it's due.
Well, I hate to, I hate, I hate to nix it so, you know, still kind of early on in the process, but if it's a year commitment or nothing, then that's like, you know?
Did you get that?
Yeah, so, um, if we decide, whether or not we decide to continue the service tonight, we can still do, um, January and February for what we're paying now, the four fifty within our first year contract. Then if we want to continue on, it moves up to four ninety a month. Within the contract, it says you can terminate at any time. So we could go through May, decide we don't like it, just making up an example here, and terminate then. And then we don't pay the remainder of the contract, as an example. Per your question, Susan, they don't do a three-month contract or a six-month contract. We would theoretically sign a one-year contract and then we could cancel at any point.
And there's no extra charge for that at all?
I believe there's not.
In there, but I didn't know if I wasn't seeing the small print either.
My next year's, uh, would you say it was six ninety a month or something?
Four ninety.
Four ninety.
Four ninety a month, okay, it's called five hundred dollars.
Four fifty to, jumps to four ninety.
Okay, it's called five hundred dollars and we can, and so twelve months, so that is what, um?
Let's, I'm gonna pack it here.
Six hundred dollars, it's six hundred dollars, or, or six thousand.
Six thousand, yeah.
Six thousand dollars in.
Can I offer suggestions since we're not quite in with what everything is coming back as far as the information? Why don't we make a motion to table it and continue the discussion, see if we can get some more information?
I might vote on it if anybody else?
I would be willing to table it and receive some more information from Whitney and see if it's quality. Quality versus quantity and, you know, then we can say we, we exhausted all of our options. But know that, you know, we're watching to make sure that this is physically responsible.
I will definitely be watching.
I'm sure you will.
About this and about other things, uh?
I just remember the hell on earth that we had to go through to spend ten thousand dollars on a citywide newsletter that went to every single person. And now it's like five thousand dollars for this questionable texting service. Yeah, if we could find out, if we can just cancel, if we do renew it, if we can just cancel anytime with zero penalty, well then, you know, try it out for another three to six months and see if we did anything better and if not, then?
Well, you guys have made your decision.
I just need a motion.
I don't think you need a motion.
Move to table.
Second.
You have the new people for that.
Okay, roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
And Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item, consideration of pay request sixteen, University Avenue Improvements Project. Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo? And Mike Jones?
Yes.
I heard a chuckle in the corner, did I go too quick?
I was like, wait, but you're good, I, I didn't have anything, so.
Okay, I thought they'd come back and revisit it.
Yeah, but you're good.
All right. We give a roll call on that one?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Next item, consideration of resolution twenty-two-one-fifty, appointing City Windsor Heights representation to Des Moines Metro Planning Organization. That will be, uh, principal will be Mike Jones, Michael Libby, technical committee is Dalton and Dennis. Sub-area nomination, uh, that will go to the nomination committee of the MPO will be Mike Jones. Motion?
Who made those selections? You did, I?
All these are mine.
Okay, alright.
I move to approve with the, uh, correction to Michael Libby's name.
Oh, did I miss that? Sorry.
Unspelling?
Yeah. L-I-B-B-I-E. Yes.
Yeah, I had it written down here correctly. Okay, we got a motion, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of resolution twenty-two-one-fifty-one, selecting persons to serve as commissioner and alternate for Des Moines Regional Transfer Authority, which is Joseph Jones as primary and Warren as secondary.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of resolution twenty-two-one-fifty-two, approving Metro Waste Authority Primary Board and alternate board appointments. Susan is primary, Therese will be alternate.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo? And Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is council reports, Michael?
Um, I thought I could talk, you know, a little bit about, uh, public works. Dennis isn't here to talk about that, so I guess I can talk about it.
Go ahead.
You know, just to summarize, the long and short of that was that, um, uh, the public work committee as a whole recognized or felt that there was a, you know, very important to obviously focus on flood mitigation. But? But as that could be more of a long-term thing, it was, you know, questions about what do we do practically in the next few years or so? And so keeping, keeping Seventy-third where it is, obviously. But I think the primary thing of focus was Sixty-Eight Street, the northern section of Sixty-Eight Street, which is unquestionably the worst street, I think, in the, in the entire city. And so it was sort of how do we get that done sooner rather than later? Because I think the original CIT maybe had it in Twenty-seven or.
Something like that.
So how do we get that done in the next few years was sort of the, you know, the conversation we had. It was a, you could see that the minutes on there are very long, so it was a very long conversation. But kind of, you know, what do we come out of it with, which is how do we prioritize getting Sixty-eight done? Seventy-third done and, you know, flood mitigation. Where, where are those going to fit into the schedule? Out of that. Read the minutes for more.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Oh, my report. I really don't have a report, Dave.
Okay.
Because it's in my swamp, so.
Okay, Joseph?
We had a public safety meeting recently and I will not steal Chad's thunder, but we went over the, his budget and where he plans for things to go for the next fiscal year and all very well done and thoroughly thought out and planned as always. We'll talk through that with you all when we get to budget time, which we're all excited about. I mean, it is budget time, but solid, more solidly into budget time.
Can I, can I interject?
You may ask a question, yes.
Oh, it's not a question.
I'll interject.
There are a few oldsters talking about forming a citizens taxpayer association for the state. Just a heads up.
Yeah.
Like a militia?
I also thought militia. Militia has a part in my head as well.
In no rate of you live.
Well, then I'll assume you're going to come protect me in my taxi.
I have to help the Southside guys do that. So I thought it was interesting. Anyway.
That's all right. Susan?
I forgot. I attended a public works committee meeting. That was a very long meeting. I learned lots. I was able to drive from my house all the way almost to Albert Lee during the time that I was on the public works committee meeting. It was that long, so.
Sort of like a podcast.
It was. It was very much so. And then, but then they started talking about maps and I'm like, probably not a good time to try to figure out what they're even talking about, so I'll go back to that later, so, but.
Are you, are you going to be the?
I have no idea. I just attended because you said I was attending.
And I thought you would be a good person.
I listened very well. Then on the Saturday, we had a communication meeting and we discussed the welcome cards that Mr. Lefredo has talked about. So we currently mail them out to the residents. I made the suggestion that council and/or the mayor take the welcome cards each month and drop them off personally to the new residents. Doesn't seem to be too many between five, six of us. We should be able to knock those out pretty quickly. And if you don't have time that month, then another council member will pick that up or Whitney will mail it at the end of the month, so.
That's what we did initially for the first couple of years.
So I think we'll go back to that and call that the Michael Lefredo Welcome Center.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a good idea that you're doing it personally, I think.
And then we discussed the AVI equipment. Then I brought up the City Bot service and asked that we bring that back to the committee next month. But as you see, we bought it. We had to kind of bring it up here because of the date of the contract being ending, I guess, for like a better term. I attended the Metro Waste Executive Board as well as the auditing meeting back on December eighth. They had a very good audit report with nothing noted. Then last Wednesday, while the sirens were going off and we were all supposed to be taking shelter, I was on a Zoom meeting with Metro Waste. We discussed the new rates that we talked about earlier tonight at the council meeting. Between the dogs barking, the audience flapping, and the sirens going off, it was kind of hard to hear everything that went on during the meeting. But the main reason I attended was to hear the decision about the rate increases. So. Last Friday, we had a large number of people attend the Elf movie. It was nice to see new faces as well as faces that I recognized from previous movies. I think we had fifty-ish people, sixty, maybe even seventy. I mean, there were a lot of, there weren't any tables that were open, were there? So do some math on that and that's not my specialty, so somebody else can.
Who else?
There you go. So thank you to all the volunteers and the sponsors that helped to make movies in the park or movies in the community center a success this year. I'm sure we'll start planning soon for next year's movies. Also, thank you to staff members that showed up to serve pizza, popcorn, and drinks with smiles on their faces on Friday. Special thanks to Chief and to Brian with Public Works for always being there until the end of the movie to make sure that cleanup is a breeze. I know, I appreciate that. Let's see. Thank you, Mayor Burgess and Councilor Lefredo, for your dedication to the city for the last four years. It was a pleasure to work with both of you. I hope that you will continue to provide your thoughts to us once you no longer have to see me every first and third Monday of the month.
You'll get tired of it.
I also want to recognize the Fire Department as well as the Police Department. They've really stepped up as both have been responding to more calls throughout their shifts since we switched over to Westcom. The Fire Department has really had an increase in their call volumes since the switch and they've taken that on with, you know, zero issues, so appreciate that. And then I want to just end with accepting my sympathy to Therese Harms and Rick at the passing of Rick's mom. So wishing everyone a very happy holiday and a wonderful new year.
Next item is consideration of resolution twenty-two-one fifty-three, recognizing council member Michael Lefredo for his years of service to the citizens of Windsor Heights. Whereas the city of Windsor Heights recognizes Michael Lefredo for his years of service as a city council member from twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-one. And whereas during his time on council, city initiated a new residents' welcome program, completed major road improvement projects, worked diligently to find solutions for serious flooding issues threatening the community. And whereas council members of Lefredo's commitment, willingness, and ability to understand and respond to the concerns of the people of Windsor Heights has made a substantial contribution to the betterment of the city of Windsor Heights. And the council wishes to extend our sincere best wishes in his future endeavor. And now therefore be it resolved, the city council does hereby commend Michael Lefredo for his years of public service given to the Windsor Heights community. Thank you, Michael.
Dave, thank you. I appreciate that very much. It was a pleasure working with all of you and, and certainly representing the citizens of Windsor Heights and working with our staff too.
Travis, do we have to have a motion on that?
Yeah, move to table so we can come back.
When we come back, it'll be.
Citizen Lefredo.
So moved.
In a second.
Roll call.
Susan Theres?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Lefredo? Yes, sir. And Mike Jones.
Yes.
You think they're all in happy holidays? Bless you all and happy holidays.
So will they appoint you Colonel in the militia or?
I don't think I'm real gay.
Admiral, you need to take up a little bit of a side of things?
Am I on it?
Yes.
He would.
Item eight A, consideration of resolution twenty-two-one fifty-four, a resolution recognizing Mayor Dave Burgess for his years of service to the citizens of Windsor Heights. Resolution reads, whereas the city of Windsor Heights recognizes Dave Burgess for his years of service as mayor from twenty-eighteen to twenty-twenty-one and as a member of the council from twenty-twelve through twenty-fifteen. And whereas during his time as mayor, the city initiated a new resident welcome program, completed major road improvements projects, worked diligently to find solutions for serious flooding issues threatening the community, and successfully responded to major events like a pandemic and a durachio without disruption to city services. And whereas Mayor Burgess's commitment, willingness, and ability to understand and respond to the concerns of the people of Windsor Heights has made a substantial contribution to the betterment of the city of Windsor Heights. And whereas, the council wishes to extend our sincere best wishes in his future endeavors. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council does hereby commend Dave Burgess for his years of public service given to the Windsor Heights community. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Michael.
Motion?
I'm staying. I'm not going to sit. The motion by Susan, second by.
Second.
Susan Theres?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Lefredo?
Yes.
And Mike Jones?
Yes.
Next item is move to adjourn. We're going to have to ease it up.
Disasters are.
So moved.
Yeah, in a second.
Susan Theres?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Michael Lefredo?
Yes, sir.
And Mike Jones?
Yes.